Okay, the time is seven oh one. And I'm calling this March tenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of Borough Council to order. We'll begin with a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance by Council of Ramsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I just wanted us to take a moment with everything going on in our world to take a moment to keep our thoughts with the folks in the Ukraine facing unimaginable violence and war crimes and invasion. And I know here in Carlisle and across the state, we have a great Ukrainian population. So I wanted to keep our thoughts with folks in the Ukraine and folks here in Pennsylvania and let them know we're with them and we're here to support them any way we can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, the roll, please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Ms. Mellon?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
Mayor Schultz?
Here.
Mr. Stube?
Here.
And Ms. Hayes?
Here.
Okay, we'll begin. First, we have a presentation by Kirk Stoner, the Cumberland County Planning Department Director. Kirk, if you make your way on up to the podium, we're excited to hear from you. We miss you. We haven't seen you in a while.
Sure, thanks, Mayor Schultz. Great to see everyone. It's always great from the planning department side and the county side to go out and see our municipalities that we work with on a regular basis. I do want to say before I start, we really enjoy the relationship we have with Carlisle Borough, work with Susan and the staff on a regular basis, and they're top-notch. So we really enjoy working with them. The relationship's great. And I think if we're going to get things done in the county at the municipal level, but also at a broader level, county-wide, we need to have those good relationships in place. So we never take those for granted. So thank you for having us this evening. I think two topics we wanted to talk about tonight, I-83 tolling and also a status report on the I-81 master plan and improvement plan. So I guess we'll start with the I-83 tolling proposal. You've probably seen that over the past couple of months, Pendott has proposed tolling of the I-83 South Bridge. The bridge was built in the nineteen-sixties, replacement cost of five hundred to six hundred million dollars. They're proposing through the P-3 project, public-private partnership process to toll that bridge to provide the funding that's necessary for it, again, five to six hundred million dollars for that. Estimated tolls would be one to two dollars. Again, keep that in mind, that's estimated. The actual toll amount would be determined after the P-3 company would come in and work through the construction preparation process and determine how much the bridge would cost. The tolls would offset the cost of that bridge. And again, those tolls would be a projection of the traffic that would be on the bridge. So recently, the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners passed the resolution opposing the project. Two weeks ago, I introduced a motion at the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study Technical Committee to oppose the project, and that was also passed to the coordinating committee. The reasons why we had concerns with the project, I think first and foremost, was that a tolling project like this, and tolling in general, you typically look at a project where you have regional traffic or interstate traffic that's using the facility. So in case of the South Bridge, you're looking at seventy-three percent of the traffic on that bridge, one hundred and twenty-five thousand vehicles per day. Seventy-three percent of that traffic has an origin within ten miles of that bridge, so it's local traffic. When you broaden that out, nine percent of that traffic, only nine percent, has an origin and destination greater than twenty-five miles away from the bridge. So when you look at other tolling proposals, whether it be I-80, you know, the passers-by tolls kicked around for I-81, when you look at those facilities, there are truly interstate traffic that's traveling a large distance between origin and destination. There's no strong incentive for the traffic to get off those facilities and use our local roadways. So in the case of the South Bridge, one hundred and twenty-five thousand vehicles per day, given the local nature of that bridge, there's an estimated thirty percent of the traffic that would detour on the surrounding streets to avoid the toll. So if you're familiar with the immediate West Shore, there's not a lot of capacity on the roadways on the West Shore to take that. So we're concerned about our communities and the impact to the communities of traffic, of congestion, quality of life, first responders trying to get through the traffic, especially during rush hour. So I believe there are some of the concerns that we raised. We worked with our municipalities, had several meetings with eight of our municipalities on the West Shore. All of them are in lockstep with the county in opposing the project. Some municipalities are looking at a lawsuit. I know that's actively moving forward to talk about how they can join together and potentially have a lawsuit against Pendott for the imposition of the toll. The project is moving ahead. They're looking at the environmental assessment phase of the project. So look at some environmental features as one aspect of the project. The other really looks into the social aspect and impact our communities. That'll happen this spring, and I believe it's our hope that we call to attention the impacts of that fee on our community. So with the detour traffic, but also with the families that live there now. You know, the one to two dollars may not seem a lot to some folks, but to some folks, it can be the difference between being able to go to work and have a job and not. So I think that's a big concern that we need to raise with the feds as we move ahead. So I wanted to raise the issues behind it with Council, get any comments you may have on it. One of the things that the county resolution did not have was a suggestion for some other funding source. So I think the irony of this whole thing was, in July of last year, they had a group of us to come to the Radisson to talk about the proposal, talked about the funding, how much it was going to cost. The day after that, Pendott released their T-Rock report, which is their Transportation Revenue Options Committee. So that report listed out eighteen revenue options which could be used to raise funding for our deficit we're seeing in transportation funding. It was a day after tolling. So when I look at that, it seems like tolling was one solution that was picked and randomly pushed ahead. We're being told this is the solution. This is the one that we should follow. I don't think that Pendott has actively looked at those eighteen other considerations in the report. It seems like every five or so years, they do another report, and the report says the same thing. You know, when you get off fossil fuels, the gas tax works, gas tax works against our policies for sustainability in our communities, but yet nothing ever happens. So in this case, I think, again, we're trying to get the square peg in a round hole for tolling of the South Bridge before we've really considered the other broad-range options that are there. So if Council looks at the issue, it's one of those things I would encourage you to do, to look and see are there other options in the report. You would say, hey, if it's not this, if it's not the tolling, maybe it's this, maybe it's a mileage-based user fee, maybe it's, you know, a fee on delivery services, whatever it may be. That was something that we didn't include in the county resolution. I'd be glad to answer any questions anyone has on tolling.
Kirk, Kirk, have any of the other municipalities, I know other municipalities have taken a position by resolution or otherwise, have any of them looked at what's right for them as far as the other funding options are concerned?
They have not. Sean, most of them have just expressed their opposition at this point.
Okay. And do the commissioners plan on taking sort of a revised look at that and really advocating for a particular option? They're just going to continue the position they have?
Yeah, so I don't believe our commissioners are going to look into the issue anymore in terms of recommending another option. Personally, I believe that the ball is squarely in Pendott's court. They put together a high-profile commission to look at the issue. This is the second time they've looked at it. And yet, we haven't seen any action. We haven't seen from the legislature either come out and start looking at the additional options that are out there. So I think while we can support other alternatives, we need to see legislative action. We need to see some action from Pendott to say, hey, especially now, we're looking at four and five-dollar gas prices that are out there. That's a deterrent to folks driving, which is fine. You know, we can see VMT go down, but as VMT goes down too, so does our gas tax. Our gas tax, there's legislators now talking about cutting the gas tax in half. That's going to be catastrophic. Well, we don't have enough money already, and then we cut the gas tax in half again. It could be catastrophic. So now is the time for good thinking. Now is the time for proactive thinking. And enough of the studies and enough of the excuses I think we've seen from Pendott and the legislature in the past.
Any other questions from Council? Okay, you can move on to the other one.
Sure. So, yeah, I-81, I provided a handout to Council that gave an overview of the I-81 improvement plan. I'll cover this quickly so that you can leave some time for discussion. I think everyone's aware, I-81 has been studied likewise several times to see what improvement options would be out there, how much it would cost to widen the facility. Most recently, I think we're on the right track of really looking at an improvement plan that's going to look at different options along the corridor to improve traffic, to improve safety, improve congestion in the long term. So over the course of last fall, there were several public meetings that were conducted by Pendott to look at the focus areas throughout the corridor. So from the Maryland border to the I-78 split, there were twelve focus areas. They narrowed those down to four priority focus areas. In the Carlisle area, from exit forty-two or forty-four to exit fifty-two is one of those priority areas. So we did a little more public engagement in those areas to identify what the actual problems were and what are some of the potential solutions. So when you look at the handout, one of the options that was proposed were auxiliary lanes that would really connect from exit forty-four to exit fifty-two, really connect the exits. So if you're familiar with five-eight-one just before five-eight-one on eighty-one in Silver Spring Township, there's a new ramp that was used there to connect I-81 to exit one-fourteen to five-eight-one. Same concept, you know, so we take a lot of the local traffic and move it out of the through traffic, reduces speed differentials and reduces weaving of cars trying to get on the highway. So I think when you look at the Carlisle area, the number of exits we have, the number of access points that we have, makes a lot of sense to have some of that separation, have that extra capacity for that eight-mile stretch. A second issue that was really looked at as part of the study was closing interchanges. So this is never popular, and during the public engagement activities, they kind of threw up, you know, a different list of interchanges. So which ones should we close, if any? So they came back, the consensus was, let's close exit forty-eight. The second most popular exit to close was none. So you see that, you know, when you look at it, it's exit forty-eight, forty-nine, I think really everyone that's been in the area have tried to navigate the area, or more importantly, give somebody directions on how to get here using those exits. It's a challenge, there's half interchanges. The planning department had worked with Army Heritage Education Center several years ago to look at a study that's interchange. So there's some initial renderings out there of what it could look like and how we could make it be a full interchange to close forty-eight and make that full interchange at forty-nine. So that was another option that was looked at. Exit fifty-two, I think one of the issues with exit fifty-two is, you know, the weaving that happens there. You have a lot of trucks coming onto the main line, tight radius is there, slower vehicles entering. So they looked at some different designs. They don't have time tonight to get into what a diverging diamond is, but if you Google it, and you Google it, there's some good diagrams online. You can see how it operates. A diverging diamond really improves safety and mobility by eliminating some left-hand turns, simplifies some of the movements, and there's some crossover traffic, but there's not as many conflict points. So that's the layperson's version of a diverging diamond. Again, take a look online. I think you can see some diagrams on Google of how that would work, proposing that potentially for exit fifty-two. Final item that was looked at was a connection of P-A turnpike and I-81. So if you've been in the area for any length of time, this is one of these urban legends of, are we going to connect I-81 and the turnpike? So way back in my infancy of my career, back in like nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven, working for a consulting firm, we looked at this. And then as I came on as planning director, we looked at it again, and now here it is, you know, it comes up again. So is there benefit of connecting I-81 and the turnpike? So the wide-area study looked at, again, public interest of potentially connecting it on the east side or the west side of Carlisle. So the east side, where I-81 and turnpike cross would be the most logical place to have a direct connection there, again, high speed, no toll takers and nothing like that. They threw out the concept of a western connection, which wouldn't be a direct connection, where you'd have access from the turnpike and no access point to the turnpike in the western part of the county at P-A four sixty-five Allen Road. So I think the consensus of the public engagement was the eastern connection was preferred. I would kind of caution on some of these public engagement results. If you go on the website, I listed the website there and look at them, if you go through the public meeting, you can see they kind of throw up options without a lot of context, you know, so do you like this or do you like that? I think we're making decisions like this. The public deserves a little more attention, deserves a little more background on how these different things work so that you can make an informed decision. So I think it achieved its purpose of getting some reactions to concepts, but in terms of folks that are part of the meeting and actually responding to it, maybe they didn't have all the details that they should. Next steps in the process is really to convert some of these concepts into projects. I sit on the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study. We've looked at including funding in the twenty-twenty-three tip for preliminary engineering for some improvements in the area. The idea would be to do some of the preliminary engineering on that, and then there's a different interstate maintenance tip that looks at improvements to the interstate highway system that hopefully they would fund the construction. We are looking at projects in the ten to fifteen million dollars range, and I think the auxiliary lanes here in Carlisle would fit the bill for that. But we still may see, you know, like, this stuff doesn't happen overnight. I think we all realize that, potentially two to five years before, you know, we would see any sort of construction. I think we'd see some pre-construction work before that, before actually moving ground will be some time. So I listed some contacts there for you. Steve Dex with the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study, we've worked a lot with him. Commissioner Fashi is our representative to the Hats Coordinating Committee. My contact information there too, as well as the website. I would encourage you to take a look and see what's on there. While the official public engagement is over, I think as we move ahead and we start to take these concepts into projects, we need to be engaged. I think in the county, the most important municipalities to be engaged are Carlisle Borough and South Middle Township are the two that really need to be engaged the most, to make sure that improvements that sound like a good idea at the state level are validated at the local level so that someone that isn't really familiar with the community, isn't making decisions, that at the end of the day may have a harmful impact on our communities. I'll answer any questions you have on I-81.
Any, any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Ramsey.
And Kirk, thanks, thanks for this. This is great information. Is any of the federal funding that got passed in the infrastructure bill eligible for this? Is that something the county's looking at, going out and trying to get those funds?
Sure. So, yeah, good question. I think with the bipartisan infrastructure law, the Hats MPO, so we get an allocation of the Hats MPO, we got an extra hundred million. So you have to keep in mind that hundred million, though, is slotted to specific uses. There's some safety money, there's some bridge money, really not money that would be suitable for this project. I think it still remains to be seen. There's extra money that come in from the bipartisan infrastructure law to potentially look at the interstate maintenance component of that. So I think Pendott's still sorting through that. I know we've been advocating that this is a major project that should be looked at. There's also some grant programs through the infrastructure law as well that could be used for this. I sat on some webinars to look and see, do we want to put together an application? I'm not sure we're ready yet, and I think with some of the criteria they're looking at, it may, some of them may not be the best fit for, you know, expanding a major interstate highway system with some of the criteria that the feds are looking at right now.
Just a comment, and it's going to come as a surprise to nobody in this room, but the only engagement I've had from any of the constituents here in the borough is like number one, number two, and number three priority is how do we keep from getting our downtown to be the detour for accidents on I-81? We all know that, and I don't know if interconnection is a real viable option, but, you know, in this sliver of Cumberland County, that is without a doubt the number one priority of folks here.
Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Kirk, the hundred million that's coming to Hats, that I understand that it can only be allotted toward certain projects, does that though potentially free up dollars that would have otherwise been used for those, or are some of those projects that will qualify for it in the pipeline, and now it's going to free up other funding sources?
Sure. There are some projects on the pipelines. When we look at the pipeline, that's the long-range transportation plan, essentially our twenty-five-year plan. There are a few projects that were moved ahead on that in priority order, moved on to the tip. Another element of that is too is local bridges. There's a lot of money from the bipartisan infrastructure law for local bridges. That's in there. There's also some safety money. And this gets back to some of the federal regulations, too. There's, it's called a Highway Safety Improvement Program. There's a lot of money for that program, but it's highly bureaucratic to get the money out. You have to do a cost-benefit analysis to figure out if what you're going to do is actually going to work. So you invest a lot of engineering dollars just to see if you're eligible. So the program hasn't been as popular in the past, hasn't really been used a whole lot in the past. I think we're looking for ways to leverage those funding a little better.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for your presentation tonight. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Kirk. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens and visitors on any topic of borough government. If you'd like to come forward and be heard at this time, now's your opportunity. So let me see, go ahead, sir. Come on up to the podium. We'll need your name and address.
Okay. I'm James Evans. I live at one-five-seven B Street, B as in Bravo, here, just on the north side of Carlisle. I'm coming to reference, I did email the borough, I don't know if something got lost in translation about a month ago or lost in the email, but it's due to the B Street reconstruction project that comes down from College Street all the way to Factory Street and the former Maslin site. Well, I'm happy that the streetscape is going to look nice. There's a lot of issues, I think, with the reconstruction that you guys may well know. It's delayed. I talked to a lot of my neighbors on the street, and we had a discussion, and I think there's some safety issues. There's some other issues with, which you guys are aware of, the light posts, but light posts are very high. It shines in people's bedroom windows when they try to sleep at night. While it's great to have the street lit up, I think there's some issues that I think, having a discussion with the neighbors that actually have to live through this construction for the past couple of years, would be prudent to address some issues that may have not been addressed in the past or didn't come up when you're presenting those plans at, say, at the local town hall. I think it was the Quaker House where there were things that were presented before. A lot of times you can look at a plan, but until you actually see it on the ground and as it goes, you have to adjust those plans. And I, I think, I don't know if it's too late in the game to do some things, but I think some of those things need to be addressed, some concerns of like residents, who's responsible? There's strips of grass now or strips of dirt, but is there going to be something planted there? Who's responsible for that? Who's responsible for maintenance? Does that add to the property? Or is that still in the right of way? There's some safety issues because people, regardless, I don't know if the design of the curbs coming out far is a traffic calming design, but people still fly. You can see chips off the curbs. People can't turn. There's UPS trucks, FedEx trucks and those things that come down the street, and I just saw a tow truck, it's like they couldn't go down the alley. And what I'm afraid is going to happen, especially at Northwest and B Street, because it's very narrow, you see a lot of cars flying through there because there's a stop sign that wasn't there before. And because it's so narrow, when somebody turns or if they don't slow down, you're going to have a side swipe, and then if you have a pedestrian trying to cross at the same time. I just think there's some issues that probably need to be discussed on the ground and not in an office where you actually have people on the street saying, here's where we see issues, so that you don't get so far along in the project. And I know it's supposed to be completed, I guess, June, July, from my understanding, that it doesn't end up costing more, whether that's through a safety and accident or property values, things like that. So I just wanted to address that. I'm not here to knock, you know, anything. I'm happy that, of everything that's happening there, but I think there's some things that still need to be addressed as the project goes forward. And then one of the other big things is the sidewalks. I think it's already been highlighted, the sidewalks are already crumbling. I got some pictures, and some of this stuff I can share, sit down, I can email, however you guys want to do it. But you can see where the concrete wasn't mixed properly. You can see the sand that's at the top. So when people with our snow over the winter, they throw solid one, it's already a thin coat. That busted, the sand came through, and the sidewalks are crumbling. So again, that rolls into the other bit, who's responsible for the sidewalks after the borough completes this project? Is it the homeowner? And if you got, you know, responsibility for the sidewalk and it crumbles within six months, well, that's, that's an increased cost to the people that live in the neighborhood. So I think trying to discuss some of these issues, not with myself, but the, and I talked to some of my neighbors. They were standing out tonight. They're willing to sit down and say, hey, here's some of the issues we have where we can, we can find a balance or give some ideas going forward. I know, like I said, I think it's about six months left on the project or less than that. But I just wanted to address that, and, and again, I'm not here to knock. I'm happy for it, but I just wanted to point out some things that I think we could do better, and I'm, I have all the time in the world to sit down with you guys and say, here's what I've seen or from my experiences. The traffic calming and other projects, I've lived in Europe most of my life in Asia, and I've seen some things that if plans can be adjusted, that I can give some ideas on that. And I've seen the traffic calming, and especially in the UK when I lived there, a lot of times it doesn't work if it's not right. You'll see cars that constantly go through and knock stuff over. So addressing those safety issues of not just jutting out the sidewalks, but what can we do, reflective things, those things. So I don't want to belabor it. I can be long-winded, but I just wanted to raise those issues. And again, I'm free to try to give more input on how to make a good solution where everybody's happy and a win-win.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Thank you for the comments. I saw the borough manager writing a lot while you were speaking. I'm sure, does someone already have Mr. Evans' contact info? If not?
I got your mailing address, but your physical address, but we'll need your phone number. If you can just jot it down and give it to the borough secretary, you'll hear from us tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thanks for the time.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other public comment, either here in Borough Hall or by Zoom? Okay. Move on to the consent agenda. This is a list of routine items which do not appear to be controversial in nature and which probably do not require additional discussion. They can be acted on in one motion in their current form. If discussion is desired on any particular item, any member of council or the public may request the item to be removed from the consent agenda, and that item will be considered separately. Is there any such item? Okay, seeing none, move on. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Stube. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hicks. Call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. There are no table, continued and recurring items. Move on to reports from elected officials. Under my report, I move that council adopt a resolution approving Dickinson College to undertake the issuance of tax-exempt bonds through the National Finance Authority to refinance certain existing debt and finance a capital improvement project that includes renovation and improvements to Drayer Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Ramsey, and this was the subject of the earlier hearing at six forty-five. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Reports from committees, budget and finance. Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's one item on the Budget and Finance Committee agenda this evening. I move that Borough Council approve the purchase and installation of a new closed-loop door operator at the West Pomford Street parking garage in the amount of twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion by Mr. Stube for the installation of a new closed-loop door operator at the West Pomford Street parking garage. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Ramsey. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
That concludes the Budget and Finance Committee report this evening.
Thank you. Move on to ERCP.
In the absence of the deputy mayor, I guess I'll give this report. I move that council appoint Ms. Morgan Goodling to a partial term on the Carlisle Borough Historical Architecture and Review Board, HARB, term to become effective immediately and shall expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
It's a motion to appoint Ms. Morgan Goodling to HARB. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hicks. Call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
I further move that council appoint Ms. Megan Anderson to a partial term on the sewer authority, this term to become effective immediately and shall expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion by Counselor Mellon to appoint Megan Anderson to a partial term in sewer authority. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hicks. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
And that concludes the report.
On to public safety. I move that council consider, I move that council approve a resolution to support the application for a grant through Department of Economic Development, LSA, for a fire truck replacement. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hicks. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. I move that council adopt an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Carlisle, adopted by ordinance two zero three two, and thereafter amended with respect to chapter two forty-four, vehicles and traffic, to add two on-street handicap parking spaces, one located at sixty-eight East Penn Street and one located at one thirty-eight East Louden Street, and also remove two on-street handicap parking spaces, one located at four twenty-seven Northwest Street and one located at twenty-nine East Pomford Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hicks. I'll call the question, and that calls for a roll call. Madam Secretary, please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Schultz?
Aye.
Next, I move that council authorize the closure of North Pitt Street between I and K Streets on April nineteenth through the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and September twenty-seventh to October second, two thousand twenty-two, between the hours of seven AM and ten PM daily to facilitate the drop-off and pickup of vehicles for Carlisle events, auto auction at the Carlisle Expo Center. Approval is contingent upon the receipt of a valid certificate of liability insurance from, I'm sorry, form naming the Borough of Carlisle as an additional insured and the applicant reimbursing the Borough one hundred percent of the variable and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with these events. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hicks. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Those opposed, motion passes. And finally, I move that council authorize a north side ride, community bike ride on April second, two thousand twenty two, with a rain date of April ninth, two thousand twenty two, from eight thirty AM to one PM. Approval is contingent upon the receipt of a valid certificate of liability insurance form naming the Borough Carlisle as an additional insured and the applicant reimbursing the Borough one hundred percent of the variable and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with this event. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, I'm sure Council, Deputy Mayor Landis is very excited about this. Unfortunately, not here tonight to vote on it, but I'll call the question, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, motion passes. That concludes my report and move on to public works.
I make a motion that Borough Council adopt an ordinance revising the permit fee for use of the sewage dumping station at the Carlisle Fairgrounds from fifty dollars per permit to a hundred and twenty five dollars per permit. This requires a roll call vote.
There is a motion by Councilor Perry to revise the permit fee for the use of sewage dumping station, Carlisle Fairgrounds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Stube. And that calls for a roll call. Madam Secretary, please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Schultz?
Aye. The motion passes.
I move that Borough Council award the unit price construction contract for the twenty twenty two pedestrian curb ramp rehabilitation project to the lowest responsive bidder, Kinsley Construction Incorporated of York, Pennsylvania in the amount of one hundred sixty two thousand, one hundred twenty two dollars and forty cents. Borough Council may also authorize any contract change orders needing prompt action in an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars each to be approved at the discretion of the Borough Manager and brought before council for retroactive approval.
There is a motion by Council Perry for a to award the unit price construction contract for the twenty twenty two pedestrian curb ramp rehabilitation project to Kinsley Construction, additionally allowing the Borough Manager to approve change orders that do not exceed five thousand dollars. Is there a motion? Or I'm sorry, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Stube. Second by Mr. Stube, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
And lastly, I make a motion to reaffirm the purchase and installation of two Gorman Rupp model T eight eight six one S dash B self priming sewage pumps for the Wagner's Gap pumping station from Envirep Incorporated of Camp Hill, Pennsylvania for ninety seven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Co-Stars Program.
Motion by Councilor Perry to reaffirm the purchase of two self priming sewage pumps. What's more exciting than that? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Stube. I'll call the question, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Councilor Perry. On to the Sustainability and Community Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item this evening. I move that council approve the purchase of a license management program for eighteen thousand dollars for the Sustainable Community Economic Planning Department budget pending Borough Solicitors' review and approval.
There is a motion to approve purchase of a license management program for eighteen thousand dollars. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm not sure. Council Ramsey was a little louder. Second by Council Ramsey, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Move on to new business. So one more bite at the apple. If you thought of something else during the meeting, this is another opportunity for the public to step forward and provide comment. None here in Borough Hall, anything on Zoom? Okay, thank you. Reports from council members and staff. Ms. Hayes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So some updates from Dickinson. The interim title for President John E. Jones III has been removed and he is now the college's thirtieth president. We had an uptick in positive COVID cases on campus, but we took some additional precautions and have seen case numbers decline over the past few weeks, and we will continue to monitor those cases closely after spring break. Next week, from March twelfth to March twentieth is spring break for us as well. Also, the Climate Justice teaching is on Wednesday, March thirtieth. It is open to the community and there are sessions all day from nine thirty to six forty five PM and another session on mobilizing for action from seven to eight thirty PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Nolan?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Councilor Stube?
I have nothing further, Sead. Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey?
Nothing tonight.
I'll just briefly mention that that I was able to attend the Independence Day celebration of Bosnia with our friends at the Bosniak Islamic Cultural Center. And if you ever have the time, the opportunity to go, the food is fantastic, if if nothing else. And they they kept piling food in front of me, so plenty of food to go around. I know they want to have other opportunities where we we get together. It's a great, great group of people, very interested in in making continued connections with the community. Councilor Hicks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item is hot off the press and therefore not on our future meetings. But on the fifth of April, we will have our next Climate Action Committee meeting, which is a Tuesday evening at six PM. For the foreseeable future, it will be on the first Tuesday of the month, at least for the next four or five months. And and with that, just a reminder, you may or may not have noticed I use the word committee and not commission to reflect the fact that now we're in the implementation phase of our climate action plan, which will reflect it being a resembling a standing committee as opposed to a temporary one. And I'm excited by reconvening some of the task force leads and folks who have been working. Happy to report, we haven't lost any momentum and I'm really looking forward to getting started with both, I think, the more fun and the hard part of this challenge we have. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Perry? Thank you. Borough Manager Armstrong, nothing from staff? I'm not going to ask the solicitor. Okay, there is no further business, this meeting is adjourned.